Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, see, council activity reports, mine is going to be fairly brief. We had a airport commission meeting prior to this meeting and just to let everybody know that we're still on track for the fly-in on August 11th, is that the right?
That is correct.
August 11th fly-in and planning some new and different things, so keep an eye open for flyers and more information about that as those things fall into place, so we'll pass the torch over to council member LeBeau.
I had a park and tree meeting and a budget and finance meeting, I think that was it.
Okay, council member Hertzberg.
Budget and finance.
Council member Rink.
I have not had any meetings since we last met as a council.
They've taken the summer off?
Yeah, last couple of weeks.
Yeah, okay, all right, council member Gilmore?
I'm with Sean.
You're with Sean, all right, okay. Uh, then the, uh, we have no department head reports, we have the consent agenda, we've just been handed the vouchers, a couple of updates on their items, H, I, J, and K on their new business, and we do have a request from the fire department to bunch their act, their action items all together, so it would be doing D, C, uh, G, and J, one right after the other, to accommodate them, because I think they want to get back and wash trucks, right?
Correct.
That's correct, all right, and Doris is here too for item, uh, D and E, and you want to go wash trucks too?
I don't.
Okay.
I don't.
Okay, that's fine, so anyway, then we have before us the consent agenda, which are the, actually no minutes, and the vouchers off the update there totaling $118,516.94.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Hertzberg to approve the consent agenda, discussion, there are none, all in favor of I. I oppose, none, that carried, and then item A is the CenterPoint Energy Franchise Ordinance, and Renee will give us a verbal report, they want to remove one sentence or leave it in there and just ignore it.
That's pretty much it. Um, I talked to David Long at CenterPoint, and, um, the one sentence, he said that, um, what they feel is a compromise is if the city, um, if you recall when Excel was here, and we were looking at a franchise fee, Excel kept 75% of that franchise fee for administrative costs, and so we, the council decided to go with, um, a streetlight fee instead. So CenterPoint, um, decided that if you impose the franchise fee, they do not keep any of it, they give 100% back to the city, so that it would only be reciprocal for the city not to charge them any more fees, since they are already doing a service for the city by collecting that franchise fee. So he said you can either leave it in there, that sentence, that if we impose a fee, then we're waiving their, um, their fees, or you can take it out and not have a fee. Not have the wording in there at all anymore to even look at having a fee.
Currently, we have no fee.
No fee.
My hesitation with, with what they're suggesting is a couple of things, number one, I mean, that's not what the statute really says. I mean, the statute says that you can impose a franchise fee, and you can impose it to raise revenue or to defray increased costs the city incurs because of the, the, the operation of the utility. Those would be the license things they're talking about, but it doesn't have to be, you know, it doesn't have to only offset their license fees, it, it can be beyond that, but, I mean, I don't know, maybe you never intend to charge a franchise fee anyway, and it's irrelevant, so I don't want to waste a lot of time talking about it, but it just seems like, you know, what they're asking for isn't really what the, what the statute says. In the old agreement, it basically said, if you charge a franchise fee, they'll administer it and send you your money. I, I guess I was never aware that they were deducting 75%, but I don't know.
Not them, Excel Energy.
Right, yeah, but I don't know if Excel ever really had the authority to do that or not, but, uh, it doesn't seem like, it seems like the statute says that's what they're obligated to do, if you impose a franchise fee, is to administer it and send you the money based on the charge, but, you know, maybe it's not something we'd ever do, but I think if, if you wanted to reserve the right to do it, I think the kind of language you would want to have in there would be similar to the old agreement that we had with CenterPoint Energy, where you just reserve the right to charge it, but maybe don't do it at this time, but.
And that is what it says right here in that first sentence of 8.1, right, during the term of the franchise, hereby granted, the city may charge the company a franchise fee.
Right, and my, you know, my thing was, I didn't like the, um, in lieu of permit fees or other fees that may otherwise be imposed, because that's not really what it's, what the, that's not really what the statute says, they want it to be in lieu of that, but that, I don't think is, is a requirement, but.
If we kept the first sentence and then took out the deleted sentence, would it still be in compliance, or?
What did you say?
The highlighted one. I mean, I, I think you would need to leave the part that says the company will administer the collection and payment of, of any such franchise fee to the city, but the rest of it, I, I don't, I mean, I guess my thought is that that should come out, but it's not, it's not worth arguing over if you're never going to charge it, but if you want to preserve the right of this or future councils to do it, I think you need to leave it in.
Well, then get rid of the in lieu of permit fees and the rest of the sentence.
Yeah.
I agree.
Period behind that city.
Where are you getting it from?
On that, uh, 8.1.
Well, that's not, I'm sorry, that's not an option. It's either take the sentence out or leave the sentence in, and you're, you want to do something that you said.
Well, I know they're presenting you with two options, but I don't think those are sensible options, I mean, they're, they're trying to make it sound like those are the only options in the world, and I don't think that's true. I, I don't, I don't think that the fee is intended to be in, only in lieu of other fees, I mean, if you charge a franchise fee, it can basically be a tax to raise money for the city, that's what the statute says.
Okay, so he wants to put a period.
Put a period after city and then take out the in lieu of, I mean, the, the utility company doesn't have the right to dictate to us what our ordinance says, right, so.
Well, I assume, I assume they'd like to have a franchise agreement with us, I don't know, maybe not.
Yeah, they, they can always pick up their toys and go home, but not likely, but.
We'll plug.
You know, I guess it would be, you know, an option to, uh, to move to do that and respond and see what they say.
And like I said, you know, may, maybe the odds of ever charging a franchise are, are not that strong, and it's not worth the effort, but it, it's just that if, if you thought you wanted to preserve the right to do it, that, that would be my thought.
Okay.
All right, so.
Do we need a motion?
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Do we make the motion that on the highlighted, on 8.1, the highlighted sentence would say the company will administer the collection and payment of franchise fees to the city, period, all the rest would be deleted.
The whole rest of the paragraph?
No, just in that sentence.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Gilmore, seconded by LeBeau to, in section D, paragraph 8.1, the second sentence would basically be the company will administer the collection and payment of franchise fees to the city. Everything else from there on in that sentence would be deleted, correct? The next sentence would be, the franchise fee would be collected, and so on. Any discussion questions or other clarification? Okay, if not, all in favor of I?
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried. All right, see what happens there, all right, now we have some fire department items, first one is, uh, um, in regards to ceasing collection of vehicle fire rescue fee, and public safety board reviewed this. We now charge $350, but we have a hard time collecting?
Yeah, I mean, we, we budget for two of these a year, um, but it takes up a great deal of Belinda's time to try to collect on these. One, because she doesn't get the call sheets for three to six months late, and then the insurance has closed the account, or closed the claim, and so then she gets an angry person and an angry insurance agent calling her going, you don't have your ducks in a row, it's not our fault, the claim's closed, and so we have no recourse to pick it up. Um, we were hoping to get them in more of a timely fashion, but that doesn't seem to be able to be done, so, um, public safety discussed the options and decided to eliminate the collection of those fees, um, because, I mean, Belinda says she, she can work 12 to 24 hours on, you know, in a three-month period on trying to collect things, because she doesn't get the insurance information, or she doesn't get who the accident was, or she doesn't get the call sheet at all, or it's not filled out completely, and she has no recourse, so she said it's a ton of work for the $350.
If the $350 is collected, where does that money go?
The fire department.
Um, can I ask why it takes the fire department so long to get those call sheets to her?
I don't have an exact answer, there's, we've been working on this for about five years, we start, we got the phone or wherever, started taking pictures, and apparently we haven't done that in the last couple. We have about three of them a year probably, multiples, three to five maybe, is where we're at. Actually, it's, if somebody's not there or doesn't know how to do it, it doesn't get processed right away, and as far as the call sheets, we turn those in once a month, uh, or we attempt to. We now have a different person in charge, we're hoping to have a change and be a little bit more efficient, but that doesn't exactly give them, give them time for that at this time, so.
And one thing you should know is that when they go and they're trying to get the insurance information, the driver's license information, the police and the squads were there to get that first, so then you got to try to get it out from them, and if you can't get it from them, then they're gone, then you got to chase them around, so it turns into this really big circle. So you have one guy sitting there for 45 minutes filling out paperwork, trying to get it done, if he misses anything, then it's all forgotten.
Well, we had one call that, basically, we had information written down, but we, the car burned, so there's no information for insurance, um, the lady that called in is the only name that we had, the officers still don't have a name on whose car it really is at this point, I don't think that case is even closed yet. So there are situations like that as well, so, where we just don't have access to that information, period.
It just seems to me like we should just erase this fee and be done, it seems like more of an administrative hassle.
Well.
That's really the suggestion.
Does that $350, like, what, does that go into the, which fund for the fire department does that go into?
Their general dollars that they can spend.
Are you going to miss the $700 a year?
I didn't even know we were getting any, probably not.
I mean, in, in light of the conversations we had at budget and finance, of the up and coming expenses the fire department has, it's a little bit hard for me to think of, you know, just doing away with money that they're currently getting, but, you know, if that's what you guys are recommending, then I guess I'd support that.
I would guess it's actually more recommended from the city hall more than fire department, because we weren't aware of how it can work at that point, so, um, but it's stemming from the fire, uh, from the city hall rather than the fire department.
And, just let me clarify, this has been on the docket for almost two years in public safety, um, this has been going on.
Forever.
For forever, trying to get this information, they thought a smartphone would help, because they could just take pictures on the scene, make the process faster, email them directly to Belinda.
And that's not working.
And then she calls or contacts Andy, she has to get the call sheet, the one person that Andy's mentioning, that's the only contact Belinda had on the call sheet, she called her, and the lady just went off on Belinda, because it was three months later, and the lady goes, this isn't my problem, I just called 911, I just won't call 911 anymore.
And that was the only name we had for that instance.
So I don't, I don't know, but I just think that we're, if you had the right information so she could bill it out right away.
Yeah.
It works good, but if you don't, then it's, it's a waste of a lot of energy for $350.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you, I, I guess it's more a matter of where's the hangup that you're not getting the information that you need.
Sounds like it's just the nature of the beast, at least is what I'm hearing, is from the various accidents and the bureaucratic.
Well, not every person that, not, you know, it's, you know, our officers that are in charge, it's not always the same person there, it's remembering to do it after the fact and things like that, that's really where the ball gets dropped.
You have different people showing up at different calls.
Yes, and roles and everything else, that's really where the ball gets dropped, whether it's 2:00 AM in the morning or 2:00 in the afternoon makes it a little bit of difference too, and then remembering to do it, you know, the next day if you forget, but.
So let's draft a motion to get rid of it. And the resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Rinky, seconded by Gilmore, to draft a resolution to eliminate the, um.
Rescue.
I was going to say fee, but what are you really?
It's a rescue fee.
Rescue fee, okay, that's simple enough, I couldn't read that up myself. Okay, we do have a motion to second, any other discussion?
I'm just wondering, is there like a rough estimate of how much these calls actually cost as far as, you know, man hours that go out on this?
All depends on who, uh, who shows up, how many vehicles go, things like that, so. What are the two doubles, car accidents and car fires, is that pretty much where we're at?
Just rescues, these ones, just a car accidents.
Yeah, it only, we pull our rescue equipment at that point, yeah.
That's it, otherwise everything's, um, non-billable for the city.
And the fires, yeah.
Okay, any other question, discussion, all in favor of I?
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried, and, fire department wants to burn a couple houses, or seeking approval to do that, to control burn two homes at 412 and 417 Mini Street on Saturday, June 22nd. Looking for motion for that, to approve the donation of a building for a fire training between the City of Painsville and Ridge Road and Ridge Water College, so it's not just burning down for fun, it's more, it's.
Add to that, we're gonna, the one house fire that's through the college is going to be on June 22nd, and then the other one, we're going to do the third Monday of July.
So the 412 one is on June 22nd?
That's, don't frame themselves.
That's correct.
That's the college one.
Yes.
And then the 417, you guys are doing by yourselves, correct, that's the one across the street?
Yes.
Are these the two houses that the city purchased for the Stormwater Fund?
Only one.
What is?
Okay.
The other house is too close to the bus garage, so that one, they won't be burning.
Neil would be out of a job. Got hurt, one of his jobs.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the fire department's controlled burn of two homes at 412 and 417 Mini Street on Saturday, June 22nd for 412, and on the third Monday of July for 417, to approve the donation of a building for fire training between the City of Painsville and Rich Rodger College Fire Training Program, and to authorize the mayor to sign the document.
Second, motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Rinky, to approve that, those two burns, discussion, all in favor of I?
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried, all right, and the other, do the, uh, item G is the purchase of a side-by-side trail and transport on page 39, and, yes. There it is, looks too complicated, 2019 Yamaha Viking for $18,927 from your small equipment fund, and unless the state bid comes in less, right?
Your honor, the state bid did not come in.
It did not come in less, okay, and with tracks, with the trade-in, projected cost $16,959, is that correct? Total projected cost. $18,927.
Yep.
Less the trade-ins.
There's no trade-in.
Well, but.
We trade in ourselves.
That's, yeah.
Right, I mean, that's not really a true, if you give the value of the trade-ins, it's $11,000.
Your honor, I believe they're selling those on eBay after the fact, so we would need authorization for the full $18,000 to write the check to.
ANC.
ANC.
Right.
I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of the 2019 Yamaha Viking with tracks for $18,927 with funds from the fire department's small equipment fund.
Second. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Hertzberg, to approve the purchase of the 2019 Yamaha Viking with tracks for $18,927 with funds from the fire department's small equipment fund, discussion?
I was just looking at these bids, it looks like the Polaris was only a few hundred dollars more, but it has some extra stuff on it, is that a preference by the department as to which one it is, didn't seem like that much of a different input to me, but.
The Polaris, it does say that it all will have your, you know, it is.
That's the same, okay.
Okay, we clear? Yep. All in favor of I?
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried, and then item J off the, uh.
We're going to make a motion to surplus.
Oh, a surplus.
I'll make the motion to surplus the equipment listed on page 39 of the agenda and to advertise them for sale once the new equipment is in place.
Second. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Rinky, to approve the surplus of the equipment listed on page 39, those five items, discussion, all in favor of I?
I have a question. Is there any reason, if you wanted to surplus someone, you could surplus the snowmobile, the arrest you slid in the snowmobile trailer first, and then surplus the Ranger in the aluminum trailer when the Ranger came in?
I think we could certainly do that.
I mean, I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing to have them all at the same time or not, I don't know, just a question, I don't care which way you do it, I just.
Most would work better for sale, is really what you're asking, right, would it work better to get rid of the three and then the other two later?
Yeah, I, something to ask, I don't care how you do it, just a question.
The, the snowmobile and the, the slug, for sure, we're going to advertise eBay probably so that it don't get all west, and contact the manufacturers and advertise it out, yeah, it'll sell there, so, probably go above that item, period.
Yeah.
Doesn't really seem like a good time of year to be selling snowmobiles.
But they may be, they may be, they have some products now.
I don't know, I guess, I think it's good to fire department what they want to do and don't scrap, and the one, the one send with the place, don't look at, yeah.
I would appreciate if you could go on this slide.
Yeah, well, now, the, the motion is fairly open-ended there, it's just that, you know, we did clarify the surplus, so.
Done good.
Okay, all in favor of I? Oppose, none, that carried, all right, pretty good weather yesterday, could be, be a good time to sell these, no worries. Then, thanks for keeping it straight here on what I'm, uh, missing, then the next one is, uh, hiring firefighters, and we have a number of them here, Grant Leeser, Jason Schrantz, and Barry Gottwald, and maybe a one-year probation for these, and any update there, Chief Andy or Renee?
No.
No. Or you do it, and they're requesting to hire three of them.
Let's move to hire Grant Leeser, Jason Schrantz, and Barry Gottwald as Painsville Volunteer Firefighters upon completion of one-year probation.
I'll second.
Motion by Rinky, seconded by LeBeau, to approve the hiring of those three named future firefighters upon completion of one-year probation, discussion, does this bring you up to full?
It brings us to 25.
25.
We can have up to 26, if they're allowed, recommend 25.
Recommend 25, all right, anything else, all in favor of I?
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried. All right, then go wash trucks, I think we're done, right?
I think so.
Now we got to go.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, thank you, for what you, what you do. Okay, now, temporary street closing, item D on page 28.
I think it, are you for the chamber too?
No, but I do have a question.
Oh, okay, so we're at the, item E will do then, for the Queen Bee's Bar and Grill Car Show, correct?
Were you going to do the other one first?
Oh, no, that's fine, that's fine, we're trying to be accommodating here, so Queen Bee is looking to do a car show on Wednesday, June 12th, 4:00 to 10:00 PM, asking to temporarily close down Augusta Avenue from Business 23 West to James Street from 4:00 PM to 10:00 for a car show. Fire chief, police chief, reviewed and recommended this.
I'll make the motion to approve the Queen Bee's Bar and Grill Temporary Street Closing Application for Wednesday, June 12th, 2019, from 4:00 to 10:00 PM for a car show.
Second. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Hertzberg, to approve the Queen Bee's Bar and Grill Temporary Street Closing Application for Wednesday, June 12th, 2019, from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM for a car show, discussion?
Um, Doris, you mentioned just to contact, like, the bank and that around you, so that they know, okay.
All right, anything else, all in favor of I?
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried, all right. Have at it. Okay, then we can do, item D, another temporary street closing for the car show in Arts and Crafts Fair, and that's on page 28, and that is for August 17th from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and that is James Street from Bank of the West Drive-Thru to Perennial Bank Drive-Thru, and Augusta Avenue from Bank of the West Drive-Thru to the alley for our show, so that's pretty much similar to last year, correct? Across.
It goes across Washburn?
Yeah.
But Washburn has to remain open.
Yeah, it's, it's open, but, yeah, but they, they, they still have cars on the net, and you can't take a right or a left. And again, the, yes ma'am?
Um, I do have a little bit of concern with it, um, now with me being open at 8:00 AM, and their land, craft land, and me all the way around my business with zero parking on both streets, I would just as soon have Augusta being left out of it.
From Bank of the West.
Mm-hmm.
And they would have to make U-turns probably to get off the street, or they'd have to leave me a way for them to get out of town.
Bank of the West, Augusta, from Bank of the West Drive-Thrus to the alley.
Yeah, it was James.
Would it be the alley behind James?
To Perennial.
Must be the alley that's right before the, um, the MPI.
Yeah.
What about just doing from, uh, Augusta from the, uh.
From James to MPI?
Yes.
From where?
In case there'd be more cars that they needed that for the overflow.
From James to.
Change to MPI's fence.
Half-street there.
Or the alley.
Yeah.
Keeps the alley open.
So from James to MPI's fence.
Augusta from the Bank of the West.
Or to the alley behind Soines.
To the alley.
Because closing the James Street, they're not going up or down, right, they'll be going straight. Cause if it's closing to James Street, they're not going up or down, right, and all they're going straight.
Well, no, this does say Augusta Avenue from.
I think they're doing both.
Yeah.
It does say Bank of the West Drive-Thru, which is not correct.
Last year, then, the Farmers Market moved out of their normal corner, and they sat on the corner by Highway twenty-three, um, next to my area so that they would be more visible. So, that took the whole street up. There was nothing left.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, then they can't do that, no, they couldn't do that.
Or the part of. Drive-thru in Augusta Avenue.
Augusta.
Yeah, cause that's not really their drive-thru on Augusta, that's.
Maybe we should.
Can we table this and see if they worded that right?
Table.
Can they get a map of it with color to see if that's what they're thinking?
Yep.
Well, that's what it says on the back.
Yeah.
Huh?
It said, it's spelled out on the back.
Back?
On the application.
James Street and Augusta.
And that's what they did do last year, too, and I had zero parking for any of this.
I think, I think we should forget about Augusta and leave the Farmers Market where they are, and you're parking for you, and just stay on James.
Well, I think we refer this back to them and.
With that recommendation.
Yep. Or if you're so inclined, you can approve it with, with a change then on Augusta from James to the north.
I'll make the motion, I can get a second. Motion to approve the temporary street closing application for car show and arts and crafts fair Saturday, August seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, from seven a.m. to four p.m. With the addition of not on Augusta Avenue.
Well, it is on Augusta Avenue.
Neither north or south?
Either.
Either way, okay, James Street only?
I will second that.
That we leave the Farmers Market where it is.
Okay, we have a motion by Hertzberg, seconded by LeBeau to approve the temporary street closing application amended to include only James Street as on the application for a car show and arts and crafts fair on Saturday, August seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, from seven a.m. to four p.m., discussion?
Yeah, I think we should table it, so, but that's my question.
I would agree with tabling it, I think we should send those back and see if they can make some adjustments to their request to make sure that they're. See if they can do it some other way. I think we have legit concerns about closing Augusta, but to just unilaterally change their application.
So, we need a motion to table then?
I'll make the motion to table it.
We already had a motion.
Pardon?
We had a motion and a second already.
To approve, but we can table it.
Well, don't we have to vote on the first motion before we can make another motion?
Motion to table pushes that motion back until when we bring it back.
We.
Then we don't need to vote.
So, I heard a motion, was there a second?
Yes, second.
Renkey, okay. Um, so then we do have a motion to table this, which means that our motion would then come back in that form, which could be changed later. If, yep. Okay, any discussion on the, on the motion to table, not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Ours, none, that carried, all right. Well, they will now know what our, and our, our intent is, too. And item F, capitalization policy, Renee will give us a verbal report and on the changes there and how long we depreciate some equipment.
So, I've been going through all the policies that the city has to make sure that they're current and been looked at recently, and policies and procedures will have a lot of reading to do. Their agenda will be going out shortly. But the last time our capitalization policy was looked at was two thousand five. Um, the policy itself was put in place in two thousand three when we had KDB as our auditors. And then in two thousand five, there was some adjustments or more clarification done to the Exhibit A page, the last page of the policy. So, I did take this to Budget and Finance, this is a document that, a policy that the auditors ask each time they come. And we went through to see if there was any other changes, the limitations, we did leave that at five thousand dollars to be put into our fixed asset recording. Um, the only three changes that we made was for outdoor playground equipment, um, was if twenty years, we want, recommend fifteen. For computer monitors, CPUs, and printers, it was five, and we recommend three. Telephone equipment, um, it was ten, we're recommending five. And the K-nine unit is depreciated, and that is not listed at all, and that is nine years.
I'll make the motion to approve the capitalization policy.
Second. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Hertzberg to approve the capitalization policy as presented on page thirty-two, discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Ours, none, carried.
Thank you.
All I know is at work, we don't have any playground equipment, but we do have monitor CPU and printers, and those are at three, so I think we're.
John McKenna.
Falling in line with the IRS guidelines there, too, so, and telephone equipment, I think is the same. Okay, then, to item H, housing study. Pardon? That's off of our date here, and this is something coming around through Budget and Finance, and.
And we, your honor, the last time we did the housing study was two thousand fourteen. Um, I did contact the same people, Community Partners Research, um, to find out if they were available to update, um, the one we have. And they are and would be willing, they said it'd take about three months. Um, the fee would be ninety-five hundred dollars. They would be starting in August or September, um, and in your update, they did send me over a contract. If the council so desires, and previously, we had E-DAP pay for this, and so I'm recommending, um, that E-DAP take care of the nine thousand five hundred to get it updated.
Do you have an idea of other similar communities, how often they do housing studies? Cause I know we had done one many years ago, and then left it, and then did another one, and now we're looking at a five-year, um, which, to me, makes sense to do them on a somewhat regular basis. But I'm just wondering if you have any idea?
I do not.
Okay.
I think it, it depends on if they have activity going out in their community or, or trying to spur activity.
I think that's what Budget and Finance, we do have some, what I'd call developers or people looking, and this will help them with their financing and whatever.
Helps to look updated rather than having something that's.
This has not gone through E-DAP, though, right, even though they're recommended to be paying for it?
Yeah, no, it has not.
When do they meet?
I think, considering we just got a contract before we started this evening, and that this is going to be paid for by E-DAP, I would move that it go to the E-DAP board for review at their next meeting. For review of the contract and a recommendation to council.
I'll second that.
Motion by Renkey, seconded by LeBeau to, um, send this to our EDA for their review. Any discussion on that?
Do they meet monthly?
They do meet monthly, um, so they will, they do have a meeting coming up, um.
Second Tuesday.
You might be overriding them, because they don't like to do housing.
Well.
So.
Well, that's okay.
I think you did, I think you did for the twelve thousand also.
The next meeting I have is June eighteenth.
Yep.
Are you on the?
Next week.
You're on the, and so is Jean, okay.
Okay.
Isn't she, Jean Swinney? No.
Motion to have EDA review this and submit a recommendation, any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I oppose, none, that carried. And the next item, we do have a parade coming up here, and the Chamber of Commerce is using our streets. Um, and we typically have a unit in the parade, and they asked if we want to participate again, and they are waiving the forty-dollar fee.
That's nice of them.
They are.
They typically do.
And you will, you'll be unit three.
And Ron already has the vehicle lined up and a driver.
We'll have somebody.
We'll have one by then.
Nothing else, I guess Ron will.
Uh, he's busy that evening.
I'll make a motion to enter a full unit in the parade.
Second.
Motion by Gilmore, seconded by Renkey to have a unit in the Town and Country Days Parade, discussion?
Are we going to dress based on the theme this year?
What is the theme this year?
Denims and diamonds.
Oh.
I look really good in diamonds, by the way.
I might wear denim, but.
You're not gonna.
I don't know.
Your diamond tiara?
Dress, dress as you, as you, as you feel.
Yeah, these words.
Yes. Well, we haven't passed the motion yet, so we might not even have to. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Ours, none, that carried, all right. Okay, then the next item off of the update here is since the baseball team, high school baseball team is going to state, they're having a. Yes. What do I want to use here?
Escort.
Parade out of town, and they're looking for a.
Send-off.
A send-off, that's a good one, thank you there, I knew, I knew there's a reason why you're here tonight, so. Uh, send off on Thursday, June thirteenth, and looking for a motion to show our support, uh, and allow the police and the fire departments to escort the team out of town.
And fire, and ambulance, too, or not?
Fire.
We're not sure.
Wake up.
Cause that, for the football, I believe they were all.
Did they have?
Years ago, or?
Yeah, for the last fall.
Yep.
Yeah, they'll have to contact some trick here for that, we don't carry that.
No, say to you. I'll move to support the Bulldog baseball team and allow the police, fire departments, and any other individuals who wish to escort the team out of town, including but not limited to the ambulance service.
Second. Motion by Renkey, seconded by, is that Hertzberg second there?
Yes.
All right, to, uh, support the Bulldog baseball team and allow the police, fire departments, and whoever else to escort the team out of town, lights and sirens.
I, this doesn't in any way conflict with Town and Country Day events?
It could.
It could.
Mm-hmm.
Cause our police are usually tied up with.
But this is nine-thirty in the morning.
Okay, so they're.
They'll be, they'll be done before the parade at seven.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Won't take too long to get them out of town, they're in a hurry to get down.
I mean, there's nothing going on in the morning, though, that day.
Not that it's all the police and fire. Not till when does the carnival open?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Ours, none, carried, good luck.
No, they're gonna be running.
And the last item on our action is the two thousand nineteen street and drainage. Project, and Mr. DeWolff is here for a verbal report.
Yes, uh, the construction of the project has begun, uh, the contractor's currently working down on Hudson Avenue. Uh, they're working on the underground utilities, working on the sanitary sewer and water, uh, portion of the project, I would anticipate probably at least a couple more weeks of underground infrastructure, and then they'll start rebuilding the street down there, so. Uh, tentatively, they plan to go up to Belmont next and then, uh, move down to Maple Street after that, so we will continue to pass out newsletters to the impacted property owners.
Hmm. Okay, from what I've heard, it sounds like things are going fairly smoothly so far, except for one little.
Glitch.
Glitch?
Yep, they did have a issue with their pump, obviously.
Yep, mhm. And that's all gotten taken care of by the contractor and.
Yeah, I know, they went door to door to make sure they covered everybody that had, that was impacted by it.
Excellent, okay, then we do have some requests for deferments, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, listed on page fifty-two there. And so we're looking for motion to approve the two thousand nineteen street project senior citizen deferments for those individuals and couples.
I move to approve the two thousand nineteen street project senior citizen deferments for the nine households listed on page fifty-two of the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Renkey, seconded by LeBeau to approve those deferments, discussion?
Um, if I'm reading this right, when these properties get resold or inherited or whatever, assessment will be due with interest?
Not with interest.
Not with interest.
It's just the assessment.
I read that someplace, often, didn't it?
It is not with interest, because if it was with interest, they'd end up paying more than they would if they put it on fifteen years. So, it is not with interest.
It is in here, we have finished and taken out.
Yeah.
I read it someplace.
I thought it was written in there, too.
Okay, so it's without interest.
It's right here.
Oh, yep.
For all, talks about accrued interest.
Okay, anything else? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Ours, none, carried. That's it for action. For our informational, we have the thank you from the Initiative Foundation for our participation there, notice from Painesville Township that they are, uh, have a public hearing on, uh, right about now, June tenth. Six fifteen, that's over. Regards to a gravel and asphalt pit in section four of Painesville Township. And then we have the notice from Minnesota State Demographic Center of our population now that we have broken the two thousand twenty-five hundred, um, mark for population. Which means a couple of little extra things as far as administrative, and let's see, we're at twenty-five thirteen and one thousand one hundred and one households. And the liquor store reports for May, the notice from Stearns County on the change in speed on, uh, Business Highway twenty-three, just on the east end of town, dropping from fifty-five to thirty, and that goes from basically up at Cronus Tire out through the underpass to the industrial park, right?
The, the fifty-five, the thirty will go to Claire's Avenue.
Go to Claire, okay.
Yep, and right now, it's at the greenhouse, at the edge of Angie's property, and it'll now go to Claire's Avenue to stay thirty, and then it'll go to fifty-five.
Then go to fifty-five, okay.
So, it'll still be on this side of the train track, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the last thing is the open house notices for the resurfacing work that's gonna be done on Highway fifty-five, Painesville West to Regal. And the last year, they did Regal to Belgrade, I think, didn't they?
Was it in twenty-four?
I'm not sure.
They did the city like in the last year, that was up two years ago.
I think that was last year.
Yeah.
The important thing about that is that the bridge out there on fifty-five by, is gonna be closed, so a section of that, so I did take these documents out to, um, Blue Stem and Fleet Supply to make sure they come to that, so they get some signage saying that they're still open, since people, they'll see road closed.
So, they'll have to take that. Carroll Road, is that a detour coming in?
It's gonna go along twenty-three and then come up, up to Regal, then go across.
Okay.
These are the dates that they're closing the roads?
Right.
No, it's just, it's closed from twenty-three, past Fleet Supply, over the bridge, cause they're resurfacing the bridge.
Mm-hmm.
So, that section's gonna be closed.
Oh, okay, and they can, and Highway four is closed.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, sorry.
So, how do they expect the people on Highway four to get into Painesville?
Uh, big detour. I think they've gotta go seventy-one.
I'm only a mile up.
Oh, from seventy-one?
No, from four, from fifty-five.
Gravel roads.
Does it do well on my bikes?
It'll tend to be a mess without it.
Yeah. But it's not, it's not, it's an open house, so anybody can come in between four and seven to talk to them, it's not a certain time, so.
June nineteenth.
Yeah.
June nineteenth, four to seven, right here. Or you can go to Meyer Road. Maybe. Hey, anything else?
That's it?
See you at the carnival.
All right.